Call the meeting to order for the September 18, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. Quite a full agenda tonight, so we'll try to keep things moving. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for June 25.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Bob, I abstain, I wasn't at the meeting. Okay, that was quick. All right.
You're on a roll.
Old business. 69 Beach Bluff Terrace private accessway permit. Peter Ware is requesting a 90-day extension of the approval granted December 19, 2017, and extended to April 23, 2018, for a private accessway to create access for a lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace. Hi.
Hi, Peter Ware.
Go for it, Peter. Your reasoning.
Yeah, I was just requesting another extension, which will be the last one. I have everything in place to finish this up, and I've already contacted all the parties to move forward a couple of weeks ago. I guess the reasoning for the second extension, I was just trying to push off payments as far as possible. I didn't realize that I'd have to come up here again, or I wouldn't have done it, but...
That's it. All right. Does anybody have any questions? Well, do I have a motion? Go ahead.
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials previously submitted and the facts presented, they request that Peter Ware to extend the previous approval of private way access permit for 69 Beach Bluff Terrace be approved with a 90-day extension to December 17, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, Jim? Any discussion?
I would say that I would not want another one out of this, for sure. And it's, since there's not really anything, and it sounds like an ordinance, it just seems like pushing these off, pushing these off. Eventually, the things could change. I didn't even sit in on this, because I wasn't on the board at that point, so I have no idea what the issues were, but I don't think we want to set a precedent for doing more than two extensions, certainly. That would be my feeling.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment, questions? All right.
Do we want to add something to the motion?
I would prefer to have it say that this would be the last and final of two, but however that's worded.
Comments from others?
But that's just me.
Go ahead.
I would say if he does not proceed within these 90 days, it will come back to us. And at that point, the board certainly could say, "No." So I'm okay with not putting a friendly amendment on it, for that reason.
I agree with Victoria.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Would you be willing to give this applicant your sentiment right now about what you expect for any future extension requests? Okay.
I think he's probably figured it out.
Peter.
Yeah, I haven't heard any compelling circumstances why the extension is given this time, nor why in the future we would want to. Is the applicant have anything to add on that point, as to why the extensions?
Sorry, so...
Why are you seeking this extension? Why didn't you...
Well, I'm seeking just to finish up the plan, so everything's all set to go. I just have to wrap those final few things up with the engineer and architect, I mean, surveyor and lawyer.
Did you have a contractor lined up to go ahead and execute?
Yeah, they're already doing it right now. They're in the process, so once that's done, I'm bringing it in here.
But your sentiment would be, this would be the last? Is that...
Is the extension, does he have to finish work, or does he have to start work?
You granted an approval in December with conditions on it. There have been no revisions to the plan to comply with the conditions. Once those revisions are made, the plan would be presented to the board for signatures and then recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. So it hasn't even happened, we're so far away from actually breaking ground.
All right. I got the impression that he was breaking ground already.
It's a matter of getting the plans ready for filing. So, any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Good, thank you. Item number three, Sarka Sewer Service Area Amendment. Say that three times fast, that's hard. The Cape Elizabeth Town Council has referred to the Planning Board a request to add 33 Wells Road to the sewer service area. Section 15-1-4I Sewer Ordinance. Is there anyone here to present, or are you going to give us a history here, Maureen? Is Mrs. Sarka here? Is there anyone here by the name of Sarka? Okay, because I was told that Mrs. Sarka would be here. She might not realize we'd be this quick. Okay, so what is before the board is a referral from the Town Council, and I gave you the section of the sewer ordinance that applies. And basically, if a sewer service area is going to be amended, the Planning Board should be asked its opinion. And that's what you're being asked, to recommend whether or not this makes sense or not. The Sarka lot is on a road that has public sewer. It's got public sewer provided to all the abutting properties, so this would be kind of like filling in a little spot. There is another property, just like the Sarka property, where the sewer was extended to it several years ago. So this is a traditional process. Any questions from anyone?
A comment?
Go ahead.
I would say that I would support this, because it's in line with our comprehensive plan to extend sewer in areas where the sewer is available. It makes a lot of good sense to get as many people back onto the sewer away from septic for many different reasons, so I'm going to support this.
Go ahead, Jim.
I guess I've never been to one where nobody showed up, so far. Do we drive on, or do we wait to see if they show up and go on to the next item on the agenda?
I say we continue on.
Okay, then I've got a motion for the board to consider.
Okay.
Are we ready to go to that?
I'm going to do something crazy.
Okay.
I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment. We do allow public comment on items, and so I will open this up for public comment, even though we don't have a formal hearing. And if there is no one who wishes to speak, it'll be a real short public comment period. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I close the public comments at this time. All right. Anyone else? The door's open. Peter? Yes. Sue, we're taking up your item.
Oh, good. Sorry, I'm late.
Come on up to the front.
Hello, Sue Sarka.
Just a quick overview of why you want to do this.
Okay, so 33 Wells Road, we're putting on in addition to our home, and the existing septic system is original to the home, which is about 28 years old now. And we've been advised that we either need to update and/or replace the septic system, or there might be an opportunity for us to get on the town system. So that's what we're doing. That's what we'd like to do.
Okay. Were there any questions of the applicant? It's awfully quiet. Okay, Jim, go for it.
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that, based on the requests made by Sue and Greg Sarka and the facts presented, the Planning Board recommends that 33 Wells Road be added to the sewer service area.
Second? Any additional comment, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? You're good.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, 185 Spurwink Avenue Site Plan Amendment. Elsie Maxwell is requesting amendment to an existing site plan approval for 185 Spurwink Avenue to create a lot around the existing building. Section 19-9 Site Plan Completeness and Public Hearing this evening. All right. Introduce yourself.
I'm Daniel Maxwell, representing Elsie. What we've done here, I guess you said it was a site plan amendment. There's lot-line changes. We've turned a 12-acre, 12 acres of farmland with a daycare sitting in the middle of it. Oh, this is for the Ocean House daycare, is that the site? We've turned that into, separated the lot, so that the business is on its own, small lot, and the surrounding farmland is separated. So if you want to look at the, for those of you with the paper copies, I highlighted the changes in yellow, but I can point it out up here. Basically, you're looking at, this Spurwink Avenue is at the bottom, and north is to the right. So basically, you're facing west. There's the daycare, right there. The original line goes way out here. This property here is the medical building. So what we've added is these lines right here. And then we've done an easement for storm drain right here, and for sewer right here. There's no change to the business or the use of the building, and no change to the building or the parking landscaping, anything. Just, the only changes are the lot lines. That's about it.
It's been a while, I'm trying to remember my next step. Completeness, that's right. We're going to discuss completeness of the application. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on completeness of this application? All right, seeing no one, are there any questions from the board about completeness of this application? So I just want to, this is for clarity, for me. This site exists as you show it today. It's just that, in the past, the lot lines around the daycare have never been drawn. Is that correct? Am I understanding correctly? The lot for the daycare has never been actually set aside?
It is, it has been.
It has been.
What we're doing is correcting what was missed in the past.
Okay. All right. Do I have no questions? Do I have a motion on completeness? Go ahead. Motion for completeness, for the board to consider, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Elsie Maxwell for an amendment to the previously approved site plan for the property located at 185 Spurwink Avenue to create a separate lot for the daycare facility be deemed complete with the following waiver granted. Number one, a waiver from providing an erosion control plan because no ground disturbance is proposed. Do I have a second? Peter? All right. We're good. Any further comment on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? All right. So the next order of business is a public hearing on this item, so on the merits of the request, not just on completeness of the submission. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak about the merits of this request? Seeing no one, the public hearing period is closed. All right. And I open them up to the board for questions regarding...
I have one comment slash question.
Okay.
And I don't think this is going to affect anything, I just wanted to point out, the easement goes over an existing hoop house, and it basically restricts the right of building and also allows the right to keep the surface of the ground above said systems free from structures. So, I mean, you're kind of granting them the ability to take out part of your hoop house, but that's just, you know, as is drawn, anyway. That's just a point of fact. I don't oppose this at all, I'm just making aware, the way this is written, it reads that part of that hoop house could go.
Go ahead, Danny.
It's essentially a temporary building, I guess. I don't know what you would call that in the ordinances, but it's basically just pipes in the ground.
Yeah, hoop houses are considered temporary structures. Are they not? Am I correct, Maureen?
I am the owner of that hoop house.
Yeah.
I mean, if that storm drain needed to be repaired, replaced, it would not bother me. I'd be involved in it, anyway.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this proposal? Go ahead, Peter.
This is essentially cleaning up the documentary record on the configuration of this parcel, and it seems to be a good idea and worthy of approval.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? A motion? Go for it.
Motion for approval, finding of fact. One, Elsie Maxwell is requesting an amendment to the previously approved site plan for the property located at 185 Spurwink Avenue to create a separate lot for the daycare facility, which requires review under Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Two, the amendments are compatible with the natural capabilities of the site to support development. Three, access to the development will not be on roads, I'm sorry, will be on roads with adequate capacity to support the traffic generated by the development. Access into and within the site will be safe. Parking will be provided in accordance with Section 19-7-8 Off-Street Parking. Four, the plan does provide for a system of pedestrian ways within the development. Five, the plan does provide for adequate collection and discharge of storm water. Six, the development will not cause soil erosion because ground disturbance is not proposed as part of this amendment. Seven, the development will be provided with an adequate quantity and quality of potable water. Eight, the development will provide for adequate sewage disposal. Nine, the development will be provided with access to utilities. Ten, the development will not locate, store, or discharge materials harmful to surface or groundwater. Eleven, the development will provide adequate disposal of solid waste. Twelve, the development will not adversely affect the water quality or shoreline of any adjacent water body. Thirteen, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Fourteen, the development will provide for adequate exterior lighting without excessive illumination. Fifteen, the development will provide a vegetative buffer throughout and around the site and screening as needed. Sixteen, the development will not substantially increase noise levels and cause human discomfort. Seventeen, storage of exterior materials on the site that may be visible to the public will be screened by fencing or landscaping. Eighteen, the application substantially complies with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Elsie Maxwell for an amendment to the previously approved site plan for the property located at 185 Spurwink Avenue to create a separate lot for the daycare facility be approved with the following condition. One, that the proposed easements be in a form acceptable to the town attorney and signed and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds within one year of this approval.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? All right. All those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, Danny. Next item on the agenda, Haynes Private Accessway. Stephen and Jennifer Haynes are requesting a private accessway permit to create frontage for an existing lot located at 28 Woodland Road. Section 19-7-9 Private Accessway Permit Completeness.
Carol?
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Mitchell, Mitchell Associates. I represent Steve and Jennifer Haynes, who are here this evening. I'm basically, I'm filling in for Bob Metcalf, who is on vacation right now, so please be with me, bear with me as I go through this application. So the lot is located on Woodland Road. This is Woodland Road here, and it intersects Shore Road at this point here. It's actually, the intersection is actually in the city of South Portland. This is an aerial survey of the subject property, the Haynes. This is Woodland Road here, this is Warren Avenue. And as you can see, that it's surrounded by single-family lots, there are actually eight single-family lots surrounding the property, two of which are owned by the applicant. The parcel is a non-conforming lot that doesn't have the required road frontage. Therefore, we need to put a private accessway in to create that road frontage. This is the lot here, and it's little, just under a half acre in size. It's located in the residential C-zone, and the 40-foot wide portion is located right here. It has 40 feet of frontage on Woodland Road, and the 30 feet, I just want to mention, it's 40 feet wide, but it, for a private accessway, the requirement is 30 feet wide, so we exceed that. The vegetation on the lot, this section is minimally vegetated. The building portion of the lot is entirely vegetated with understory of herbaceous vegetation. The topography, as you can see, it slopes from Woodland Road down to the rear property line in the 40-foot wide section. There is a topographic knoll in the northern portion of the property. It's about a four-foot high knoll. The drainage in this section slopes right down the middle of the 40-foot portion of the road, and it goes off the property and enters a catch basin at a low point located here. The knoll slopes in a southerly direction. Most of it slopes or drains to this catch basin. A small portion drains to this low point and then exits in this direction. There is an eight-inch public sewer line, there's an eight-inch water, public water line, there's natural gas in Woodland, and there's overhead electric telephone and cable. This is a, I got three photographs of showing the character of the 40-foot wide section of where the private accessway would be. This is standing on Woodland Road, looking down. This is looking, this is standing about midway in that 40-foot section, again, looking in a southerly direction. And then this is, in the rear of the property, looking back up towards Woodland. So it's mostly deciduous trees on either side of this 40-foot wide former right-of-way. So this is a copy of the layout and utilities plan. As you can see, the private accessway is designed in the middle of the 40-foot wide strip of land, extends back approximately 160 feet to this point here. The private accessway has been designed in accordance with the town standards for an accessway. There's an overall section of 18 feet wide. The travelway is 14 feet wide with two grass-gravel shoulders on either side. There's a buildup of gravel underneath, and then topped off with topsoil and grass. The turnaround, we have done the best we can. We don't exactly meet the town standards, and it's because of this dimension right here. It's about 10 foot too small in order for us to meet the 40-foot wide, 40-foot length of roadway in this point here. But we have met with Chief Gleason a couple of times, reviewed it with him, and I don't know if you have received any comments from him. The discussions were that if we could agree to a private residential sprinkler system for the proposed residence to meet public safety, that he would agree to this, so. And the applicant has agreed to that sprinkler system. The residence has been sited near the top of the knoll at the high point, and with drainage, with the slope grading away, we have designed a rain garden in this section of the site to capture the majority of the runoff from this property, including the accessway. This is a copy of the grading plan, grading and drainage plan, and we've designed the accessway so, with a cross slope, that it drains in an easterly direction to the left side of the roadway. It will enter, or it will drain down a grass slope, enter a culvert opening here, then the culvert will outlet into this rain garden. It will store approximately 1,000 square feet of rain during a rain event. And we've designed it with an emergency spillway located here, in the event that there is a larger storm event, and it captures, and it starts to overflow, it will discharge through this emergency spillway and then enter this catch basin here. But we, again, we've, it's my belief that the drainage on this property will be significantly enhanced from what it is now. And the utilities, we're connecting to all the public utilities. The sewer line actually runs down here. We're going to connect to the sanitary sewer here, connect to the public water in Woodland. We're going to have underground electric telephone and cable, and I believe the applicant's going to connect to the natural gas. In terms of the buffer, it is the applicant's intention to preserve as much vegetation as possible, and we are going to preserve all the vegetation within the building setback line. And we've also designed, this is an updated footprint from the plan that you have, I believe, and we have agreed to offset it 10 feet, the required 10 feet from the building setback, in addition to having the 10-foot wide... in addition to having the 10-foot-wide building setback. There's one waiver that we're at, that we're requesting, and that is the letter from the Polton Water District. Because we're having a sprinkler system, they require specific information, design information on the sprinkler system, which is in the design phase right now. So they won't issue that letter until we submit that information. So we are asking for a, sort of a temporary waiver at this point. And then with regard to the review comments from the town engineer, just review quickly our responses. This is off of Steve Harding's Sabegel Technics letter. Items one through three, no response required. Number four, there is, he mentioned a standard note be placed on the drawing regarding the, that the town won't be responsible for the maintenance of the roadway. That note is on the plan. It was just a miss on his part. The applicant agrees to provide a public easement to the town for the existing sewer line that is here. The plans have been revised to show a Y-connection to the sewer line. Number seven, no response required. Number eight, Steve asked for a dimension on the front portion of the accessway and where the pavement is, and we've placed that. It's a 20-foot, 20-foot from the edge of pavement of Woodland back, and we've placed that dimension on it. And then finally, I just wanted to respond to a couple of letters that have been sent to the planning board from neighbors. On a couple of letters, they represented that the lot is the low area of the, of this area, I guess, the low point of this area. And I just want to clarify that it's not the entire lot that is the low point. It's obvious by this knoll here. The low area of this lot is right along the southerly boundary line where the catch basins are. So I just want to make that clear. And then the other item that I want to clarify is on the rights of the neighbors. A couple of the abudders are asked if they're going to lose their rights to this portion of the property. And the answer is no, they're not going to. They will maintain their private rights to walk, to connect to utilities. This was, this goes back to the late 1800s, the subdivision plan. There are private rights for any of the abutting lot owners in this subdivision. So I just want to clarify that. And that's, that's it.
All right. So regarding completeness, I think I unplugged my microphone. So does anyone have any comment on completeness of this application? Go ahead, Peter.
Just one question, John. Am I correct in understanding that the plan is now to have the driveway gravel, but with the possibility of paving it in the future?
Yes. The gravel, the gravel accessway right now is proposed to be gravel, but the applicant wants to reserve the right to pave it at some point in the future.
So for any runoff considerations, we should consider as if it were paved, probably, right?
Yes. Yes.
Good question. Go ahead.
On your, on the road end, on the bottom part is a ditch. Does that water, yeah, does that water just go directly to the catch basin?
It does.
And is there much coming into that from the adjacent properties below?
These are the existing contours here, and as you can see, there is some drainage flow that flows in this direction. It will be captured by the ditch and enter this catch basin here. But again, currently, the way it is today, all of this runoff goes to this catch basin. We're going to take, you know, probably two-thirds of it and capture it for the rain garden.
Now, we're discussing completeness. Do we have all the information we need to make a decision? Yep. I'll get, I'm doing it backwards on that. So, anyone else on the board have any questions about completeness? All right. Is there anyone in the public who has comment on completeness of this application? That means, do we have enough information to move forward? And that doesn't mean it has to be all perfect right now. There's time between now and the final submission for people to fill in some blanks and answer some questions. But do we have enough to move forward is the question. Is there anyone who would like to speak? If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brad Norris. I live at 26 Woodland Road, so I'm an abutting neighbor. And it was my understanding that they were seeking a waiver on the stormwater runoff plan, and that hasn't been brought up tonight at all. And I have very, very serious concerns with that because I've got a picture of it, like a pass around, the children, you know, what the conditions are now. You know, I understand that the Haynes have an opportunity to develop this property, and you know, I will admit, I don't like it, but that's life. We move onward. I just want to make sure that it's done right. We have invested several thousand dollars into our backyard, and I don't want to see it turned into a, suddenly turned into a swamp back there, that's all. The other concern that I have too is of the gravel yard. This home is going to be literally in the backyard of about nine people, even though there are just only six direct abutting neighbors. And a gravel yard in the summer, a gravel road, if you've ever been beside one, they're atrocious. I mean, they kick up dust all summer long, and who wants to live in the middle of that? Suddenly, we've got nine homes that are in the middle. Very frankly, if they reserve the right to pave it, I don't know why they don't pave it right away. And then I know also, I was reading some of the documents from the board, and there were some concerns about the, a lack of landscaping plan that went along with it as well. So with this lack of a stormwater plan and lack of a plan for the landscaping, I don't consider it a complete application personally.
All right. Thank you. It's ready.
Good evening, Mark Mercerow. I live at 17 Charles Road, which is the property on the lower right quadrant in the picture that's showing there. And just a point of information, I couldn't see Brad's picture that he handed around, but regarding, I too am concerned about stormwater runoff, especially during, you know, rain events or, you know, spring runoff situations like that. I mean, and if, what I, if I heard correctly, it sounded like the low point was slightly different than my conception. My conception is based on where I see standing water in the late winter, early spring, and during, you know, rain events. And it's pretty much at the, at the end of the driveway, the planned driveway where it meets, where my wife's and I's property, 17 Charles, is. And that's kind of like, that's the low point according to where the water sits. And it comes right down that driveway path and probably somewhat down the height, that four-foot knoll, somewhat, somewhat, somewhat down that direction. And there's not great communication to the, to the existing catch basin, to my knowledge. My wife and I have a little shade garden in that area. So, you know, it's, we're just concerned that there's a lot more excess rainwater runoff that it could turn our little, little square area kind of mucky and, you know, just, we wouldn't be able to use it the way we use it now.
Great. Thank you.
And I'll pin this picture around. It's not a great picture, but it was taken, I think, in the late winter, but it shows about what my conception of a low point is.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I have more of a question than like a statement, just for verification.
Could you come to the podium before you state your question?
Just semantics. I own the...
Your name and address, please.
Sorry. My name is Dave Connor. I live at 13 Charles Road, so I am, I own the storm drain, I guess. That's silly, but it's in my yard. So I'm just looking, a question of semantics that the gentleman was stating. So like, he said that current runoff runs into that storm drain, so I wasn't sure, like, if that meant he thought that, like, there was actual water that flowed into that, because that's, to be honest, I don't recall that ever happening since I've lived there. And I, my parents bought that house in 79, so that's, that's never been a thing. So I just, you know, I don't know, like, I hear water running through there, but water doesn't physically spill into it. So I was just curious if the proposed plan was going to be something that was going to then be having water physically spill into it. Because again, history, and I've had a long history, 79, water has never actually collected in that area where it was. I don't know if they, like, put it in the wrong spot or what the deal was. I can hear water, I can see water physically running, like, when I look down through the drain. But again, water never, in all the years I've ever lived there, has physically spilled over the sides of that, down into that drain. So just curious if that was something that was expected to then occur from this point on or not, or if that's just, yeah, I don't know. That's my only question.
Good question. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period, and we will continue to address, we will answer all of those questions. All right. Go ahead.
This is... Maureen, this is probably a question for you or for anyone who knows more than I do about this. In terms of completeness...
Sorry. The waiver of a stormwater management plan, that's part of that? Is that we're deciding they can have a waiver as part of the completeness, or is that part of the final?
Yeah. Well, I think the applicant needs to step up to the podium and make sure that what I'm stating is accurate. But I believe that the applicant is not asking for a waiver of the stormwater management plan. And I would suggest to the board that the plan that you see behind you, that has drainage arrows, that has topography, that talks about verbally how the water moves around the site and where it exits the site, could be considered a stormwater management plan. That what really is being not submitted is stormwater calculations. And stormwater calculations technically are not required for a private accessway permit. And in your site plan regulations, you don't require stormwater calculations for an impervious surface increase of 10,000 square feet or less. And the reason you don't do that is because the stormwater modeling software that everyone uses will not be useful for small amounts of impervious surface. So even if you had the stormwater calculations, they just don't function at this small amount of impervious surface. So if you were at an acre, 40,000 square feet of impervious surface, I would strongly urge you to have stormwater calculations done. But for this project, I think that's what's really being discussed, is those calculations, not a whole stormwater management plan being waived.
The only reason why I ask is because the, the letter of September 11th says that specifically has requested a waiver, so I just...
Yes. I do understand that's what it says, and I would suggest that that letter from the town engineer maybe could be, it's your, it's advice to the planning board, and I think it could have been honed a little bit, but also the applicant has been honing the information they have been providing as well.
So I guess the question would be to the applicant, are you not requesting a waiver? Would be my question.
No. Yeah. I mean, Maureen is right, and you're right. We did, in our submission package, request a waiver, but only on the stormwater calculations. We did provide in your booklet a narrative on the existing and proposed drainage. We provided details on the rain garden. And since we're enhancing the drainage and where, as I mentioned, where we're decreasing the rate of flow specifically off of this area here, which currently all drains to this low point off of our property into the catch basin. And we're taking the majority of the runoff and directing it to the rain garden, which will, if you're all familiar with the rain garden, it's a depression in the landscape that will store water, allow it to infiltrate down through a base of material, a mixture of sand, topsoil, and compost, will allow it to infiltrate down through. And it's also planted with wetland plants in the top layer. So for those reasons, we did request a waiver on the stormwater calculations.
Could I? Go ahead. I'm feeling a little bad about what I suggest about the town engineer. I believe when the town engineer said the waiver, he understood, when he said stormwater management plan, he was thinking stormwater calculations, because that's what engineers look at. Go ahead, John.
In line of that, how much impervious surface is requested, or is on this plan? I mean, I know that usually it's the $10,000, or $10,000.
I think it said, I think it said 2,500.
2,500, okay. All right. So it's not even a quarter of what's required for the 10,000, 10,000 square feet, dollars?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Oh, one other question. Maybe the applicant can take a look at the pictures that were provided and just let us know if the applicant has the idea of where on the map the pictures were taken. We're not, I'm personally not familiar too much with the property, and I know one of the pictures was said to be at the end of the proposed driveway, but I was wondering if you could take a look at the other picture. Not to put you on the spot, I'm assuming we'll probably have a sidewalk, maybe, but...
Again, you know, Bob Metcalf was the one that sort of did all the work on this.
Like I said, I apologize for putting you on the spot like that.
I can speak with a smaller picture. This I took, it's from my yard, from you, Mercerow. This is looking from my yard to the, to the Haynes property. So this is by, no, this, this is looking, can I...
Yeah.
So... Okay. So this is our house right here. Okay. So this is looking right along this area. And this, from here, well, stretched down here, frequently looks like, that's very blue, like a lake.
Yeah. So...
That is from 2016.
This is six feet of grade change from here down to here, the six feet. And then it's relatively flat.
Okay.
It's relatively flat from here to here, and that's why you're getting the puddling during a rain event, because it's not, there's not a lot of pitch there. Eventually, it does seep to the catch basin, but you're not getting, you're not getting any puddling here because of the gradient. It's only when it runs off the applicant's property.
And then...
And then the, the culvert that you proposed for the north side?
Yeah.
That's designed to take, like you said, two-thirds of the rain on the driveway that would go into that other?
It would go into the rain garden.
Okay. And, thanks. The other question I had is, you heard the comment about the drain, um, excuse me?
Okay.
Well, no, the, the drain that the, the last person spoke about?
Oh, yeah.
I wasn't sure where, do you know where that is?
I'm not aware. I mean, would, if, if he's, if he's referring to the actual storm drain pipe, no. Nothing will enter the storm drain pipe, that's subsurface. If he's referring to a, a catch basin, then it's, it's probably, I don't, I don't know, because I haven't, I haven't seen it. If he says there's no water entering it, then there must be something to do with the grades around it.
Could he come up and, could he come up and show us if he was at that point?
No.
No?
It's not allowing the, the runoff to enter that, probably because of the grades.
These are, this is a question, make sure Bob knows, when we do our sidewalk over there, we will want to, to understand how that works.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
I don't think two or three people pointing here and there. We want to do it onsite ourselves and with the engineer who's working on this project. So. I, I appreciate the question and I understand it, and I just think it's more of an onsite kind of understanding.
Right.
So we're still trying to get through completeness here. Are there any other questions? Another, well, here I'm going to go. The buffering, as you've picked up, is another key issue that we will want to see on plans in the future, I believe. Am I correct? Buffering.
Would you say, I couldn't hear, would you say?
Buffering is something that we will want to see more of in the future, or have more detail on in the future.
As I remember, there was no fence planned, so...
So, we, again...
Even though we're, we're, we're keeping the structure 10 feet away from the building?
We'll, we'll want, and maybe this is another sidewalk discussion, but just something for, a note to give Bob to keep in mind.
Okay.
Anything else? Do I have a motion on completeness?
I got one.
Go ahead.
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Stephen and Jennifer Haynes for private accessway permit to create adequate road frontage for an existing lot located at 28 Woodland Road be deemed complete. No waivers are included.
No waivers for completeness? What about the waiver on the stormwater calculations?
And also, I think the...
There's actually, I mean, let's, let's look at the checklist. I got a second from Jim. If it's not...
If you go to the checklist, this is the list of items, it's the last page of the memo in front of you. This is the list of items that are required for a private accessway permit.
So it's not required for a private accessway permit?
Well, you have to provide information on surface water drainage. I don't, I, in my opinion, the private accessway permit does not explicitly require stormwater calculations.
Calculations. Okay. But it requires stormwater, addressing stormwater movement?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody, or do you want to?
I think the applicant who requested one waiver for completeness was the...
Stormwater calculations?
No, the Portland Water District, the sprinkler system.
Uh, it is not uncommon for us to allow something to, we recognize they're waiting on Portland Water District. Do we need to address that as a?
I don't think it's a waiver on requiring it.
You know, I'm getting a lot more advice from our town attorney these days, and his advice is to formally include things in motions. So if, if there, if you want to treat it as a waiver, then I would add a statement to your motion. Let's see, where it says no waivers are included, that you may want to delete that line, and instead say, "A waiver from submitting a letter from the Portland Water District as a part of completeness is granted because it's in process and you expect to receive it prior to approval." So you can, if you explicitly grant it, you have to, you should say why.
So we're not, it's not a waiver, it's just a waiver for completeness. It's not a waiver of a standard for...
Right.
eventual approval or not.
Okay.
Okay. So that would be my friendly amendment.
As stated, as stated by Maureen.
A state about the town planner.
It's going to be happening more often.
Is the, is the friendly amendment okay with the second, or Jim?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
It's good, you guys are friendly. And then it was, and the motion was made by Mr. Shalat, so then he has to agree to it.
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I did it in the opposite order. Okay. You made it, he seconded it. Okay?
Yeah.
Robert's rules of order, I just can't get them. All right, anyone else? All those in favor? All right, next order of business, when do we want to do a sidewalk? I'm not going to ask if you want to do one, I'm assuming that we all want to do one.
Do we want to do the tabling?
After we do the sidewalk scheduling. Do you know when Bob's, when's Bob due back?
Obviously, he's due back on Friday, but we would prefer to have it next week.
Next week?
So we can make any changes.
Okay.
In chat.
All right. Sometime next week, which is the 25th, 24th through the 27th, I believe, something like that.
Friday morning?
This Friday?
The 28th?
Oh, the 28th, okay.
When, the 28th, you said?
Yeah, in the morning.
Yeah. What time are we talking about? I can't do it Friday morning.
Okay. Do we want to, let's start with mornings or evenings? Most of us prefer mornings.
I'd rather do mornings, but I've got more flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, most, that's fine, it's just that, that one morning. Tuesday and Friday are not good for me.
Okay.
Thursday?
Tuesday and Thursday are bad for me.
Wednesday!
I can't do Wednesday.
I think we got to do evening.
Okay, I guess it's an evening.
Any evening.
The evening of the 28th, Friday, late afternoon?
Friday, late afternoon?
Sorry.
No, no. I got daggers on that one, didn't I?
I heard late afternoon, so I hope not.
That could be done early.
Could do Wednesday afternoon, the 26th.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, John?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
We got yups from everybody. All right, Wednesday afternoon, 4:00, 4:30, 4:00, 4:30? Going once?
4:30.
4:30?
Yeah.
4:30? All right, 4:30, Wednesday, the 26th. Wow.
And we'll meet at the proposed driveway entrance?
Yes. So we'll be parking on Woodland Road.
4:30, Jim?
4:30. All right. And the public is invited, just so you know. All right, next motion.
I can go ahead.
Go ahead, would I?
Be it ordered that the above application is tabled to the regular October 16th, 2018 meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second?
Second.
Got John? All those in favor? It's unanimous? All right. Next item on the agenda, Old Mill Road Private Road Amendments. Malcolm Poole, on behalf of the Poole family, is requesting amendments to the previously approved Old Mill Road, located off Old Ocean House Road, Section 19-7-9, private road completeness. All right, John, you're up again.
Okay. So this application is for an amended plan of a private road, and I represent Malcolm Poole, who is here. Malcolm is the manager of the Poole Family Properties. It's, I've provided a little context map here. This is the parcel outlined. It's a 22-acre total acreage off of Old Ocean House Road. This is Mill Pond, oh, Mill...
Old?
Old Mill Road, sorry. Old Mill Road, that comes down and wise off, and, and eventually goes down near the waterfront. So there's a total of seven lots, and the previously approved plan was in 2005. This plan includes the following amendments, and these are all outlined in the booklet. The first is a, the first is a boundary line for this lot here, Lot 2. We have reconfigured this boundary line right here, it's hard to see. I don't know, Maureen, is there a way that I can enlarge this?
We're passing notes, sorry.
The magnum glass.
Yes. See that on the left-hand corner, that little plus? Down a little bit, over a little bit, over more, right there.
Not used to, this is apple, right? Anyways, so the previous property line went right to the perimeter property, and there's the I M P N right there. And we're, what we have done is reconfigure the property line in, in this fashion here. And what this does is it provides Lot 2 with the required minimum road frontage of 125 feet. So we've extended the private road to this point, and we've reconfigured the property line. The second item would be a creation of this small lot here. This lot contains the septic system, the wastewater disposal system for Victoria Poole's house, which is located across the public, a private road. And before, it had always been an easement, and the Pooles have decided that they want to create actual ownership. So we've created this small, approximately quarter of an acre lot, and we've called it Part of Lot 3. The pedestrian access easement, we've created a 50-foot-wide pedestrian access easement from the end of the private road to the waterfront. And this basically formalizes the pedestrian access for the lot owners, or the, I should say, the family members, to walk from this point down to the waterfront. The utility easement is located in between the, where the septic system is in Victoria's house, and this is basically for an easement for the necessary piping to, for the septic system and other utilities. The normal high water line, we, while we had our surveyor out there picking up existing information, we asked Owen Haskell to identify the location of the high water line in accordance with CAPE's new definition for normal high water. And then a couple items came up during the review of this, during the staff review. One was to, to, this, this is, small lot is around the existing pond that's there, and it was created when the, when Barbara Whitcomb created a lot across the private way. So all we did here was to relabel the lot, Part of Lot 7. And then the last item is the road name. There's a little, there's always been a confusion. This road heading to the Jordy property is called Old Mill Road, and this road serving the Poole properties is also called Old Mill Road. So the staff asked us if we would consider changing the name of this section of Old Mill Road, and the Pooles have agreed. They've actually come up with a, a name, Elephant Rock Road, and it's in the process of going through the, the review by the assessor and 911 and all of that. So that will be in the future. It will be changed to Elephant Rock Road. So those, those are the seven items that we're asking the board to amend this plan. Oh, one other item. We are asking for two waivers. One is the stormwater management, and there's no impervious surface associated with any of these amendments, and there's no drainage, no drainage will be altered as well. The second waiver is on the erosion control plan, and there's no soil disturbance as a result of these amendments. So those are the two waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask if there are any public comments on completeness, but since the only public is the applicant and his, and John, then I guess not. So, public comment period is closed. Findings of completeness. Any questions? Any, anything? Anybody get anything on completeness? Go for it.
Motion for the board to consider, motion for completeness, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Malcolm Poole, manager of the Poole family property, for amendments to the previously approved Old Mill Road, private road be deemed complete. Waivers have been granted from submitting an erosion control plan and stormwater information because no disturbance of soil is proposed as a part of this application.
Do I have a second?
Either one. He's closer to you, go, go with Joe.
Go with Joe. All right, any, any discussion on completeness? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous? All right. Next item. I'll go through my list here. Do we want to do a sidewalk?
No.
Okay. And we, this was not noticed as a public hearing. According to my advice, a public hearing for this change is not required. Do we want to hold one? I'm asking the board's opinion on whether they want to have a public hearing. So consensus being?
No.
No? All right, we will forego a public hearing, and we will go on to decide whether to approve this project. So I just, I'm very confused about the road name, and I know it's just me, and, and I, even watching you do that, I'm still confused about what section of road is being renamed. We're, I, I'm sorry. Maureen's showing me. Maureen's showing me.
Because this is also Old Mill Road.
Okay, where it, where it turns off from Old Mill Road. Old Mill Road comes off of Ocean House, then you turn left onto Elephant Rock. Okay, I'm good now.
Elephant Rock or?
Rock. Rock. R-O-C-K.
Yeah, that's, Malcolm knows more, but it's a, apparently it's a rock right off of the shore.
I had it as Rock.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw the name in the, in the emails, but, so, that was my only thing. I was very confused. Go ahead, Victoria.
Just to follow up, because we did receive comment about changing the road name. I'm not familiar with who, so are all the applicants, well, actually, I don't know what to call them, the applicants, the abutters, they're all family members? Because someone said they didn't wish to change their property name. And I was wondering, is everybody on that plat need to change their address?
Yes.
Because there was one person that did not wish to change.
There's one abutter, Barbara Whitcomb, was opposed to it initially. I spoke to her this morning, she's in Florida. I spoke to her this morning, and as far as I know, I don't know if she spoke to Maureen, but she's in favor of it now.
Well, go ahead.
In favor is probably a little strong. She doesn't oppose it.
She's conceding?
She's, she is, she still would much prefer not having the inconvenience of a road name change, but because all the rest of the family is willing to do it, she's reluctantly going along with it. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the family, because this has been going on for a while. There was a comment made, why don't we ask the prior, the Jordy subdivision to make the road name change? And my response was, I don't really care which one of them does it, but having two roads with the same name is a public safety hazard. Everyone has agreed to that. And I want to thank the Poole family for rising to the occasion and coming up with something a little different. Thank you.
And one other?
Go ahead. John, as you were going through all those changes, I couldn't remember if you mentioned that pond lot and Lot 1 were merged?
No.
No.
Not Lot 1, but the, she, Barbara also owns this lot across the public, a private way.
Yes.
Which is Lot 7.
There wasn't a staff recommendation that the pond lot and Lot 1 be merged?
Can I?
Go ahead.
Yes, there was a staff recommendation that those be merged. Because Lot, the pond lot is a little over 20,000 square feet in a zone district with an 80,000 minimum lot size. And so showing these lot fragments as separate lots is problematic. Our ordinance does allow for lots to be divided by a road right-of-way if the minimum lot size is at least on one side of the road. So I spoke directly with Mrs. Whitcomb, asked her directly, will you please just merge Lot 1 and Lot, the pond lot, because they're both on the same side of the road? And she is absolutely adamant that she is opposed to that. She's okay with having the pond lot be part of Lot 7, which still meets our ordinance requirement.
Okay, so you've moved the pond lot. I see.
It's, the pond lot's going to be a part of Lot 7, just as that septic system lot is part of Lot 3.
So based on her preference, it's, it's still, it's okay. We can move forward based on her preference rather than staff recommendation.
Well, you don't have to take staff's recommendation, and frankly, both options meet the ordinance.
They both meet. That's what I was looking for. So thank you. Thank you, John.
And since she conceded on the road name, let's give her the lot name, lot merging.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Andrew.
This is another technical question. On the road name thing, is that, that's part of the subdivision approval? It seemed like, at least in another issue, that was sort of almost outside of jurisdiction of this issue. So why, where does that fall?
Well, if we go through the ordinance standards, under H, conformity with local ordinances, which is near the bottom of page three of the memo from staff, you are supposed to make a finding that the, any subdivision is in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. Honestly, this, you know, when we go back over these old developments, it's, it's a little creaky how this all plays together, to be quite honest. The addressing ordinance gives the assessor and the police chief wide authority to make changes in the interest of public safety. However, it just seems a lot easier with these existing situations if they get funneled through a process where there's already changes being made. So, you know, you're supposed to make a finding it's in compliance with the addressing ordinance. Technically, you shouldn't even have to deal with this. It should have already been changed. I can't tell you why it hasn't, but we are, we have an existing situation. And Mrs. Whitcomb was very pleasant in explaining to me that they're already having deliveries not end up in the right place. So it is a real situation.
Go ahead, Peter.
Maureen, on the same point, however, would it not be appropriate to label this road, Elephant Rock Road formerly known as Old, Old Mill Road?
Yeah.
Because when you start, you know, doing property descriptions based on the new plan, they were formerly bounded by a, a private way with a different name. So to tie those two together?
Yeah. The assessor said that he has done, we've done this before, everyone's survived. The assessor will put a note in the assessing cards that says these properties used to be on, you know, formerly named Old Mill Road, now called Elephant Rock Road. So we expect to have that.
For the purposes of the registry of deeds and future conveyances of the property, would it not be useful to have it on this plan as well?
I think it would be great to have it on this plan as well.
I would recommend, John, that, you know.
But you could always bring it back for the October workshop, right? Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I'm just glad the rock was in the shape of an elephant and not a donkey or something. It's a weird name. I have a motion.
Go right ahead.
All right. Motion for approval. Findings and facts. Number one, Malcolm Poole, manager of the Poole family properties, requesting amendments to the previously approved Old Mill Road, private road, which includes formalizing the septic system location for Lot 3, creating frontage for Lot 2, and creating a public access easement to the ocean for the benefit of the lots. And these amendments require review under section 16-2-3 of the subdivision ordinance. Number two, the private road amendments will not result in undue water pollution, no construction is proposed in the 100-year-old floodplain, no disturbance of soil is proposed, the slope of the land, proximity to streams, and state and local water resources. Our resource rules and regulations will not be compromised by the private road amendments. Number three, the private road amendments make no, make no changes to potable water supply. Number four, the private road amendments will not cause soil erosion because no erosion disturbance is proposed. Number five, the private road amendments will not cause unreasonable road congestion or unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The private road does, does provide, or excuse me, provides for road network connectivity while discouraging through traffic. The private road is laid out to conform to existing topography as much as is feasible. All lots are provided with vehicular access. No construction changes to the private road are proposed. Number six, the private road amendments include an easement to connect Lot 3 to an existing septic tank, excuse me, septic system. Number seven, the private road amendments will not alter solid waste disposal. Number eight, the private road amendments will not have an adverse, or excuse me, undue adverse impact on scenic or natural areas, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat, rare natural areas, or public access to the shoreline. Number nine, the private road amendments with conditions proposed below are compatible with applicable provisions to the comprehensive plan and town ordinance. Number 10, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Number 11, the private road amendments will not adversely impact surface water quality. Number 12, private road amendments will not adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater. Number 13, the private road amendments do not include alteration to the floodplain. Number 14, the private road amendments do not include alteration to wetlands. Number 15, the private road amendments do not include construction and will therefore not impact stormwater. Number 16, the private road amendments are not located within the watershed of Great Pond. Number 17, the private road amendments are not located in more than one municipality. Number 18, the private road amendments are not located on land where liquidation harvesting was conducted. Number 19, the private road amendments do not alter existing access to direct sunlight. Number 20, the private road amendments do not alter existing vegetative buffers throughout the, throughout and around the subdivision and screening. Number 21, the private road amendments do not create a lot which might be subject to open space impact fee. Number 22, the private road amendments do not include construction and consequently do not include access to utilities. Number 23, the private road amendments do not include a phasing plan. Number 24, the applicant has substantially addressed the standards of the subdivision ordinance, section 16-3-1. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Malcolm Poole, manager of the Poole family property, for amendments to the previously approved Old Mill Road, private road, be approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that this portion of Old Mill Road, the north branch of the existing Old Mill Road, be renamed in accordance with the addressing ordinance. Number two, the plan be revised to represent the septic lot as a portion of Lot 3 rather than a separate lot. Number three, that the plan be revised to represent the pond lot, quote pond lot, as a portion of Lot 1 or 7. Choose whichever one you want.
Joe, 7.
7. Okay, lucky number 7. So let me just start that again. Number three, that the plan be revised to represent the quote pond lot as a portion of Lot 7 rather than a separate lot. Number four, that a road maintenance agreement in a form acceptable to the town attorney be signed and recorded with this plan. Number five, that the plans be revised and submitted to the town planner for compliance with the above conditions before the plan is signed by the planning board and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, Victoria. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Could we add the note as a friendly amendment about the identification of the road by name formerly known as?
So under conditions, add that, so a new condition 5.
It would be out of the numbers in the condition.
Yeah, so be, can, do you want me to do this? Go right ahead. You're good at this.
That the, that the plans be revised to note the new name Elephant Rock Road, replacing the existing Old Mill Road.
Yes.
And that would be the new condition 5, and then condition 5 becomes condition 6.
Do you want to modify, do you want to just say rename it to Old Mill Road?
No.
No? Because you want the plan.
You could, you could change one, re-named, but we're, we were trying to leave some flexibility for the applicant to work with the assessor, and they've gotten there a lot quicker, which is good.
Jonathan, you're okay with that?
I'm going to think about that one. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Victoria, you okay with that?
We should discuss.
You okay, Victoria? Yeah. All right. We'll add that. All right. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's only 25 past 8:00. It seems like it's 10 o'clock. Next item on the agenda, Pollock Brook Bridge and Boardwalk Resource Protection Permit. The town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to install 32 square feet of boardwalk over an RP2 wetland and replace an existing pedestrian bridge with a four-foot wide by 70-foot-long pedestrian bridge in the same location. Section 19-8-3, resource protection permit, completeness and public, public hearing. It seems so much later than 8:25.
My name's Jeremy Gabrielson. I'm the chair of the Conservation Committee, representing the town's application for the permit to replace the bridge across Pollock Brook and also install a short section of boardwalk on a property adjacent to Spurwick River. Just, sorry, guys, recently, but to give you a quick update, refresher. So there was, there was an existing bridge which is washed out across Pollock Brook. The town has been working for the last 18 months or so on a plan to replace that bridge with a new structure. It'll be a dock-style aluminum structure. The existing bridge was 51 feet long, and the new bridge is a slightly longer span. It'll fit right over the same spot, but it allows us to get up a little bit higher so that we can be a little bit higher from the floodplain and also hopefully not have it wash away, which was the problem with having the shorter span there previously. This will tie into a new trail, really a rehabilitated trail that comes down along the marsh down slope from the cemetery, as well as a new section of trail that will go down essentially to the old bridge abutment on the Cape Elizabeth side of what was formerly the bridge between Cape Elizabeth and Scarborough, right across the way from where the boat launch fishing pier is on the Scarborough side of the line. Up near that section, there is a small wetland that drains down onto the marsh. That's where the boardwalk would be located. Our initial plans called for an 8-by-4 section of boardwalk, which is consistent with the type of boardwalk that we've installed on multiple trails throughout town. After looking through this with the engineer, they determined that the location that we had picked, which was the narrowest part of the wetland, was pretty close to the floodplain in a place where a lot of water moves through. So their record, the engineer's recommendation was that we just move that back from the edge of the wetland a little, little ways. There's another constriction there. It's not quite as narrow as the first constriction, so it may be that we have to have some additional length of boardwalk, but it would be under 80 square feet of boardwalk. That's what we're asking for in the permit, in any event. And it'd essentially be in the same location. We'd just be pulling this line down a little bit so that we could cross in a more suitable location and not have that boardwalk impacted by high tides or flood events. That's the only change of any note since the last workshop. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So we're discussing completeness. We're doing completeness first, yes. Do we have all the information we need to move forward with this application? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion? Go ahead. Topic page 4.
Yeah, motion for completeness. Bottom page 3. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts, facts presented, the application of the town of Cape Elizabeth for a resource protection permit to install 32 square feet of boardwalk, does that change to 80?
It would be great to have that permit increased.
Should we change it to 100?
No, 80 is more than sufficient.
Man, just so we don't have to come back? You know, we've done this before, give them, is there a limit before I go any farther here?
Go ahead, Maureen.
Well, it's, it's just the application before you is 32 square feet, and it's, as part of the review, it's been bumped up to 80.
Okay, so stick with 80.
Yeah, the proposed motion puts, is proposing conditions, it bumps it up to 80.
Okay.
If you want to change it to 80 now, it's fine.
Okay.
And if your question is, is 80 a lot? I think the largest this board has granted has been, you know, 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. To install 80 square feet of boardwalk in an RP2 wetland and replace an existing 51 foot- surface proposed.
Do I have a second, Victoria? Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous.
I have a question. Where is that 80 feet? Is that instead of the 32 square feet?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Forgot to ask, well, anyway. So, we have a public hearing scheduled for this evening on this topic, and, but seeing no public here, I just want to state that there's no one here to speak. So, we'll just move on. Do we want to discuss the application in any more detail? Review? Oh, sidewalk, ooh. I think we talked about this a little bit at the workshop. Do we need, does anyone feel the need for a sidewalk? Seeing shaking heads.
Actually, hate to be the, there, any news. I don't know, can we talk about it and then decide if we need a sidewalk? Or is that?
Yeah.
Because I'm, I might be moved to not move for sidewalk.
Okay, because we can always table that, so. All right, you have some questions?
I do. It seemed like there were some serious concerns about the bridge location and construction method, I guess, given its access in the floodplain, or the, the saltwater marsh, actually not, and that potentially causing large problems for permitting. And I'm just wondering, you know, well, that's, that's question one, I have another one too, but I'm wondering, I mean, if that's, if that could potentially kill the process, the whole project, if you end up having to go for a, a permit, federal permit, to put the bridge in place, because you're talking about, one that spans it would not, right? I think that's as I read it, and then if you go with the, the kind that's much lighter and has much less impacts, it would trigger federal permit from USA's?
I can, I can address that very briefly.
Yeah.
The town planner is much more well-versed in the federal permitting process here than I am, but we have been in consultation with both the Army Corps and the DEP, and the town engineer's been working on those permitting requirements, and my understanding is that we're all set in terms of those permits.
So, no matter the bridge type, is what you're saying?
Maureen?
So, the, the DEP has issued a permit for the bridge.
Okay.
And I think you're, you're worried about the notes that go down the side of the permit?
Well, there's...
From the state?
Well, there was the US, it said if there's any impact on saltwater marsh that it triggered US...
Right, so, so, one of the things that happened is when we submitted, we have received the state permit. We're not doing anything in the saltwater marsh, so we don't need a federal permit for the bridge.
So, you've decided not to use the one that has the...
We never wanted to.
Okay.
There was, there was, there was a little bit of confusion with permitting authorities. There has never been any proposal to put any kind of support structure in Pollock Brook at all. The intent has always been for the bridge to land from one, one bank to the other bank. When the application was submitted to the DEP, pictures of the existing bridge were included in the application, and of course, the existing bridge is sitting in Pollock Brook now, which created some concern that we were trying to replicate what's in the brook, and in fact, that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing to remove what's left of the bridge that's sitting in the brook and put in a new bridge that would span the banks and be above the brook and above the floodplain.
Right, but I think the point was that, that, I know it's shown in here, one of these bridge types that has, it's the lighter one that has the aluminum...
Yes.
The rods that extend into the salt marsh, did they not?
The, the rods, the, the helical piers that anchor the sides would be on the banks outside of the salt marsh. They would not in any way be installed...
There's no support in the salt marsh?
No, because I've had to go through permitting in a salt marsh, and I promised I would never do that again.
Great, I, I think that's, seems like the wise decision. I was gonna suggest, if that was, if there was, that was the, where you were leaning to, to try and put it in the freshwater marsh, because it sounds like that's an easier sell for whatever strange reason.
Right.
I'm fine with that, okay? That clarifies it.
I just want to just, it's probably where at the point where I should disclose that I am also the staff person of the Conservation Committee, so I've been doing a lot of the work on their behalf. They actually did look at installing the bridge in the freshwater portion, which is a couple of hundred feet inland of the proposed location. Amazingly, at that point, the, the, the brook gets much, much wider, so it became almost not really feasible to move it anywhere, but where had it always been? And where it is right now is still saltwater, but nothing would go in the bank. It goes from dry to dry on either side of the boardwalk, of the brook.
Maureen, the plan specs do show a dock-style bridge with a crib midstream, is that not part of it?
That crib was shown by the town engineer for the boardwalk portion, not for the bridge. And that almost never, there's a couple of boardwalks in town that have actually used that kind of cribbing, but in most cases, it never gets used. And we've all wished that had been removed from the plan.
I have one more little contentious piece here that I couldn't rectify. In the, somewhere along the lines here, I saw a reference to the fact that you can't build structures or do anything within 25 feet of the edge of a cemetery. And I'm looking at the proposed trail, and there's a point where it's pinched between the wetland, and it says, it's really kind of right where the end of the current trail is. So, you've got the cemetery boundary and this, this freshwater wetland there. Is that gonna be an issue there? I mean, where are you gonna put the trail? I mean, is there, there a...
The issue regarding the 25 feet was really an issue with the north side of the bridge. And the north side of the bridge actually has about 60 graves that date back to the 1700s that have nothing but a little stone about this big.
So, it's not this cemetery?
Right.
It's a small, unmarked cemetery that was located adjacent to the, the north abutment? It is located adjacent to the...
Okay, but does the trail not count as basically anything in this case with regards to the main, to the Spurwick Cemetery? I mean, to me, that's considered development in a way, right? So, what I, what I don't want is to get into trouble, because you put this trail there, and now you're 25 feet from the cemetery, and somebody considers, considers it development, that's against, I forget which rule it even showed up as.
You know, that's an interesting question, and I, I can tell you that there were some that felt that there was no need to put that section of trail in, because we would just connect it into the cemetery and use the cemetery roads as the connector. So, I don't think we ever considered putting a trail within 25 feet of the cemetery being a problem there, because we wanted to actually use the cemetery roads. Well, some of us did. The 25-foot was really what we were looking, every, every reference to the 25-foot has been regarding that northern side of Pollock Brook. That's where we had the, the test pits dug, and we have one place where the bridge can land, where the test pit came back with no human remains.
I, I would point out that the existing cemetery does have trails and roads through it.
Yeah, but, I mean, to be fair, those roads are for people who want to visit, loved ones who are...
Correct.
So, I, that raises a question about the 25 feet, but I remember when we talked about this at the workshop, I had a little bit of concern of that, but you had mentioned something about, there's quite a downslope from the edge, and there's gonna be a buffer between those. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Sure. So, for the existing, the, the, the main cemetery here, adjacent to Spurwick Church, there's a, there's a, sort of, the cemetery slopes down, but then there's a bluff where it drops off. And we've actually had the town engineer come out and survey the edge of this wetland so, to make sure that we have enough room to put a trail in between the marsh and the, the cemetery. And the idea is that we'll be able to put that trail in downslope from the bluff. So, if you were up in the cemetery, you might see a head walking along the trail, but it, it's down far enough out of the visual field from, from what you would normally see in the cemetery that it shouldn't present a, a visual disturbance.
Is there, is there an existing, or is there an informal trail there now?
There was a trail that came along this edge of the marsh. I think it, I'm not, I think, I'm not sure exactly how far up it came, to be perfectly honest. We did do a sidewalk with the planning, with the Conservation Committee, I want to say about two years ago, and looked at the feasibility of, of putting this trail in downslope. It, it, there's room to do it.
Maureen, do you have anything on that?
That's, it's threading the needle there.
Okay.
I mean, I was, I was one of the advocates of just using the roads in the cemetery, so.
I prefer not, or trail.
Well, yeah, but the na, the nature lovers, they went with this. And it's really threading the needle, because that, you know, that, the Spurwick Marsh is, is just number one quality rated, high value for wildlife, and has all the local protections and all the state protections, and we have to be a minimum amount of feet away from that, and we don't want to be in this, in the actual respectful worship area of the cemetery. So, there's, in that one spot, there is a pinch point where you just take it right down through the middle.
And do you think, was Andrew, I think, brings up a valid point, that this would be considered development within the 25 feet of a cemetery?
We, you know, the only time we've talked about the 25-foot setback has been when we've been talking with the Maine Historic Preservation Commission as part of the historic, and this is, this is a working cemetery. It's not one that...
Yeah, but it clearly states, Maine revised statute under Title 13, Section 1371, states "Construction or excavation may not be conducted within 25 feet of a known bale site or within 25 feet of boundaries of an established cemetery," which is, whichever is greater. I mean, that's right in the document you just gave me. And so, I'm, I'm sort of, I mean, I don't personally have a problem with it, but what I don't want to happen is the state to come back and say, you put a trail, you excavated 25 feet within a, a no, within an established cemetery. I mean, that is an established cemetery, is it not?
And, and, yes, it is established cemetery, so the question would be, is this development? And in this case, there is no excavation that will occur. It is clearing, raking, removal of shrub, there will be no removal of trees. And I, the question then becomes, would the state interpret that provision to call this type of rustic trail development?
Yeah, I, I just want to ask hard questions, because I don't want it to be an issue down the road.
Thank you.
It's better to think about it now than to get, you know, smacked down later on, because, trust me, we've had permit issues dealing with my work, and they, you know, you don't, you basically have to follow the rule, and, and, I mean, yeah, the, the question is whether this is considered construction or excavation. I think that makes sense, if you're just basically clearing, I don't know how any, you're not excavating, suggest digging down, so what I would say is don't plan on digging down anywhere in that section.
Our intention is to just do a raked-out trail surface consistent with what we've got elsewhere. I, you know, I think the installation of the boardwalk, I could see an argument for saying that that constitutes construction, but that clearly exceeds the 25 foot.
Yeah, you're, yeah, it's just literally that one little section there.
It's just that one section of the trail. And, you know, the, the intention, our intention, the way that we haven't, have installed these trails in the past is literally with a rake and maybe a pair of clevers, so.
Go ahead, Maureen.
And technically, the board isn't being asked to approve the trail. You're being asked to approve the bo, the bridge and the boardwalk.
Yeah, we're doing a resource protection permit.
For the, yes, for the, for the bridge, which, yes. And the bridge is marginal, whether you, we need the permit from the town, but since we have to come for the boardwalk, we're asking for the permit for the bridge, but the, the trail isn't part of the application.
So, I was gonna ask the question, did DEP look at the trail when they, when they permitted?
We have the DE, there are two permits, the, the permit for, and there are two permits because there are different tier levels at the state, and so the trail permit is pending. The bridge permit has been issued.
All right.
All right, then, I guess that was just a comment off-topic.
Well, those are some good questions.
I think it's a good question.
Good question.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
We haven't heard much of, and we don't need to belabor at this point, the old bridge that washed out, I'm thinking that's probably a different design than the new bridge that's proposed, so we don't think we're gonna have the same problem with this new bridge?
No, for a couple of reasons. One, this bridge is not gonna be made out of a material that floats, so that should help. And two, this is gonna have helical anchors that'll tie it into the bank on either side. My understanding is the old bridge literally just got lifted off either by ice or, or high water, we're not sure which, and kind of moved a little bit, and then it moved a little bit more and wound up, but this will be securely anchored on both sides.
The old bridge, we, we speculate that it was created by dropping two tree limbs across the bank and then nailing decking on top of them without any anchoring on either side.
Guess lawyers weren't involved in that, were they?
[laughing]
All right, thanks.
Anything else? So, back to the question, do we want a sidewalk?
Oh, sorry, um, no, I'm good now.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, no sidewalk? Any, are we ready to move to a conclusion, or are there more questions?
I have a motion.
Go right ahead.
All right, motion for approval, finding the facts. Number one, the town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to install 32 square feet of boardwalk in an RP2 wetland and replace an existing 51-foot-long pedestrian bridge with a 70-foot-long pedestrian bridge across Pollock Brook, which requires review. Is that 80?
The 80 is...
Yeah. Okay. So, I said 30, so.
It's 80.
It's 80, okay.
Oh, yeah, correct.
Sorry, let me start that again. Number one, the town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to install 80 square foot of boardwalk in an RP2 wetland to replace an existing 51-foot-long pedestrian bridge with a 70-foot-long pedestrian bridge across Pollock Brook, which requires review. Is that 80?
The 80 is...
Yeah. Okay. So, I said 30, so.
It's 80.
It's 80, okay.
Oh, yeah, correct.
Sorry, let me start that again. Number one, the town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to install 80 square foot of boardwalk in an RP2 wetland to replace an existing 51-foot-long pedestrian bridge with a 70-foot-long pedestrian bridge across Pollock Brook, which requires review under section 19 dash 8 dash 3 of the resource protection permit regulations. Number two, the proposed bridge and boardwalk will not materially obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across or from the alteration area. Number three, the proposed bridge or boardwalk, and boardwalk will not impound surface waters to, or reduce the absorption capacity or the alteration area so as to cause or increase the flooding of adjacent properties. Number four, the proposed bridge and boardwalk will not increase the flow of surface waters across or the discharge of surface waters from the alteration area so as to threaten injury to the alteration area or to upstream and/or downstream lands by flooding, draining, erosion, sedimentation, or otherwise. Number five, the proposed bridge and boardwalk will not result in significant damage to spawning grounds or habitat for aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Number six, the proposed bridge and boardwalk will not pose problems related to the support of structures. Number seven, the proposed bridge and boardwalk will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quantity or quality of groundwater. Number eight, the proposed bridge and boardwalk are not located in and therefore will not disturb coastal dunes or contiguous black, back dune areas. Number nine, the proposed bridge and boardwalk will maintain or improve ecological and aesthetic values. Number 10, the bridge and boardwalk will disturb a minimal amount of ground area and otherwise will maintain an adequate buffer area between the wetland and adjacent land users. Number 11, the bridge and boardwalk will, by removing, by not removing vegetation or disrupting ground surface, will be accomplished in conformance with the Erosion Prevention provisions of Environmental Quality Handbook, Erosion and Sediment Control, published by the Maine Soil and Water Conservation Commission, dated March 1986, or subsequent revisions thereof. excuse me, wastewater from buildings and from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities in violation of Section 15-1-4 of the Sewage Ordinances. Number 13, the bridge and boardwalk, subject to the condition below, is not located in the 100-year flood plain. And 14, the application substantially complies with Section 19-8-3 of the Resource Protection Regulations. I'm just... No one's looking. All right, hold on. I'm not done.
He's not done yet.
Therefore...
You're just getting drunk.
Yeah. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the town of Cape Elizabeth for a resource protection permit to install 80 square feet of boardwalk in an RP2 wetland and replace an existing 51-foot-long pedestrian bridge with a 70-foot-long pedestrian bridge across Pollock Brook be approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the MDEP permit with, excuse me, permit for the boardwalk be obtained. Number two, that the anchor for the south side of the bridge be revised to elevate the lowest horizontal member of the bridge to at least one foot above flood elevation nine feet. All right. Three, that the boardwalk be relocated upland of flood elevation nine feet and maybe increase in size to no more than 80 square feet of RP2 wetland alteration. Number four, that there be no alteration to the site until plans have been revised and submitted to the town planner to satisfy the above conditions.
Now, Joe.
Second.
I have a question on the conditions. Is the second part of the sentence in number three of the conditions relevant, since we upped the approval to 80 square feet? Where it says maybe increased to a size of no more than 80 square feet? So if we end at rate after flood elevation of nine feet, we're good?
Would get rid of number three and four?
No.
No, just the second part.
No, I'm just saying the second half of the sentence, number three. Since we upped the, the permit to 80 square feet. That's all I'm saying. Any...
I'm good with taking that part out.
How about you, Joe? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one is opposed. Everyone is in favor. Okay. All right.
Good luck at building that.
Okay. Now's the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no public, I'll take the next motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have, on a second? Anyone opposed? All those in favor? All right. We're done.